Good afternoon and welcome to an online community meeting of the Burbank City Council and California State Assembly Member Laura Friedman. Good afternoon, madam, and welcome to our council meeting on Thursday, March 18th of 2021. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interests of public health and safety, the council and the assembly member will be participating in an online community meeting. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, the city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in city council meetings. Good afternoon, Madam City Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mayor. How are you?
Oh, great, thank you. Just rushed here right after work, so sorry for not being in a suit, but I don't want to be late. Would you please conduct the roll call this evening?
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
And Mayor Frutos.
Happy to be here with the assembly member. Outstanding. There will be one period of public comment on today's agenda's item only. If you would like to participate, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. Today, Burbank City Council warmly welcomes our Assembly Member Laura Friedman to a community meeting to discuss various topics of interest to the city, from legislation, housing, and homeless, to infrastructure and pandemic response. Assembly Member Friedman and I are joined today by my colleagues Vice Mayor Telemontes, Councilmember Springer, Councilmember Anthony, and Councilmember Schultz. We are so pleased you could join us and make time for us, madam, as we look forward to a robust discussion today on these important issues as we represent the people of Burbank. Assembly Member Friedman, would you like to make any introductory comments or introduce the staff in attendance with you today, ma'am? The mic is yours.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it's really an honor to be here, and I want to thank all of you for making the time to do this meeting and have this discussion this evening. Thank you so much, and I want to also commend all of you for the work that you do, and that's both the council and the staff. This has been such a difficult year for everybody, or at least a year and a half for everybody, and you've done an amazing job continuing to provide excellent services to the people of Burbank, and I want to thank you for all of your service. And just lastly, I would introduce two members of my staff who have joined us, Alondra Lopez, who's the newest member of my team, and Blake Dellinger, who many of you know, who has been with me since 2016.
Great, great, thank you. Now, would your staff like to weigh in and say hi if they'd like to? They're more than welcome before I move on to public comment. Okay, see none? Now is the time for public comment on today's agenda item only. If you would like to participate, please call in right now at 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335. Remember to please lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. We ask you for your patience as we finish up with one speaker and move to the next. To participate, again, please call right now at 818-238-3335. Ms. Mullins, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of callers.
Outstanding. Let's beam them in, Scotty.
Our first caller is Phil Dojic. Phil, you're live with council.
Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Something was wrong at the last meeting in shortening the speech from three minutes to two minutes. I will finish the speech that was planned for the three-minute speech regarding the speech of the citizen at the last meeting about how a person comes to be a homeless. He said it is the case of a mental person, which is wrong. The mental person is a smaller reason, and the bigger reason is a bad economy. For a better economy of the city, it is necessary to do the following. This is a serious problem. It takes a lot of work and a project. To begin with it needs to be done. First, bring the housing market to the level of workers' personal income. Second, the minimum wage should be level in the housing market. Third, the minimum wage should be as regulated in the county. Fourth, until the economy is repaired, stop the rise in prices of products, gasoline and sales tax of 10.25, lead to level county 950. Fifth, control the price of gasoline, that the price of gasoline is the same everywhere in the city or approximately. It is not correct to see at the gas station near a famous movie production, the price is $1 more. We need to know that the city of Burbank is not seen production city. The city of Burbank is the city of citizens. Citizens are living and working, and we see how they live, and we can see some of them in tents on the streets. After this epidemic of the story, it is necessary to make a project to build a facility for large concerts or famous group to raise the social and cultural life of citizens. It will be geographically indebted. Ms. Springer, from her field of expertise, geography. Mr. Telemontes, it is nice to hear from you that you talked about a large sum of money to build a bridge. The city's economy is much more important. Politics and economics are two different things. It's like a pope from the church and guitar. We are not sure, Mr. Mayor, who to give these problems to solve in proportion to their educational directions. There are political arts film driving geography and firefighting directions. There are no economic engineering and organizational directions. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Madam City Clerk, next caller, please.
Our next caller is Linda Besson. Linda, you're live with council.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you, Assembly Member Friedman, Mayor Frutos, and council members. As I stated the other night, President Biden has just signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act. I'd like to focus on the $30.5 billion that this act devotes to public transit agencies and specifically $26 billion which will be handed out to urbanized areas through formula grants. As Assembly Member Friedman is Chair of the Assembly Transportation Committee, we must discuss with her the reality that Burbank does not have a public transit system. We provide specific services for specific demographics, but we do not have a transportation system for our entire city. Keep in mind that a flourishing public transit system is inseparable from an effective climate policy. That's because mass transit lessens our reliance on cars. If residents only used electric cars and the state's grid transitioned to 75% renewable electricity, Californians would still need to drive 15% less in order to meet the state's climate goals by 2050. Historically, we've measured the speed of vehicles as a proxy for success. If vehicles are moving quickly, then the system is declared to be working well. In Burbank, we've tried to speed up traffic by limiting access, especially through cross streets, and why vehicles might now move faster through the corridor. Those people who used to have an easy trip on a cross street have a much longer trip, and a short walking trip may now even be too long or too dangerous. Our zeal for clearing up bottlenecks has just produced more traffic and has not addressed economic growth, expansion of housing, climate change, and so many other factors. Instead of measuring speed and traffic flow, we should determine how a new comprehensive and modern transit system would address our local economic and climate policy goals as well as the quality of life goals set out by council. Business communities around the country know that public transit is not only an economic boost, but now a necessity, and they have formed chambers for transit, which pushes for federal funding for public transit. We need to ask, how do people who live in Burbank connect with transportation? How do they use transportation to connect with Burbank's services? The reality is that our current and severely limited transit system ignores the needs of the majority of residents. There's talks for implementing a new but limited form of public transportation located only on major corridors, and again, this is not a solution for the majority of Burbank. The point of transportation is to get people where they need to go. Let's get the federal funds now available so we can determine a transit system that connects people to not only jobs but services and businesses all over Burbank, that prioritizes projects that will improve those connections and ultimately create new jobs, economic opportunity, less traffic, a cleaner climate, and an improved quality of life for everyone in Burbank. As transportation is on the agenda for tonight's meeting, I urge you to begin a discussion about a comprehensive, complete, visionary, and modern Burbank transit system. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any more callers.
There be no further callers, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief respond from council, the city manager and/or the city attorney, Assembly Member Friedman. Do you wish to make any comments? Assembly Member, I'll let you go first if you'd like to make any comments to the members of the public. Just keep them short, ma'am, because we've got a tight schedule, and I want to keep you on your schedule.
No, it's just nice to hear from my friend, Ms. Besson, and totally agree we need to work on public transportation, look forward to doing that with the city over the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Councilmembers, short and brief, so I can keep the assembly member on her schedule. Councilmember Schultz, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank Mr. Dojic for calling in tonight to finish his comment from Tuesday.
Any other council members? Councilmember Anthony, followed by Councilmember Springer. Keep it short, sir, this time.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as former Chair of the Burbank Transportation Commission, I absolutely agree we need to expand the transit and the accessibility of what we have here in the city of Burbank.
Cool. Thank you. Councilmember Springer.
Thank you. Thank you to the callers, and I don't know if somebody can speak to via so our listeners can hear to that. I know we do have that mic transit project that will help our commuters get to and from the MetroLink and the red line, and it's been a year since I've been on it because I haven't gone anywhere, but anyway, it does exist, it is out there. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assemblymember, welcome, welcome. I'm looking forward to working with you on transportation issues the next couple of years, so thank you very much.
Okay, I will lead by my own example of my words, so let's move on. There are five main topics on the agenda today, followed by an opportunity for Assembly Member Friedman to discuss her legislative priorities for this season. Each member of the council will be presenting on a specific item. I don't want to be the time police council members, but because of her tight schedule, we all have 15 minutes, so please adhere to the time, and if I tell you it's over, no disrespect, but I got to focus on today's schedule for our assembly member. So starting off first, I would like to invite Councilmember Schultz to commence the discussion regarding legislation that aims to enhance traffic safety. Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and Assembly Member Friedman, thank you so much for being with us tonight, and congratulations. I understand you're serving as Chair of the Transportation Commission. So Assembly Member Friedman, the first thing I wanted to start off was just talking a little bit about some of the concerns that I have heard from residents here in Burbank. A lot of them are related to traffic and vehicle speeds and safety for pedestrians in the area. You know, last fall, the city council had looked at the speed limit on Riverside Drive, and specifically a one-mile stretch. They had a total of seven horizontal curves, and that area is fronted by low-density residential housing and mixed-use development. Now, my understanding of the existing state structure under the vehicle code is that we look at the prevailing speeds, and we look at, you know, the average speeds on those roads, and we set the speed limit based on the 85th percentile, and in this particular case, that proved problematic for the city of Burbank, because when we looked at it, you know, according to our last citywide survey, which we completed in 2015, the current speed limit established in that segment of Riverside Drive was 35 miles an hour, notwithstanding the fact that collision rates on that stretch exceeded the countywide expected rates. And when we looked at revisiting that speeding area, we saw that the city had already reduced the speed limit on Riverside Drive as low as it could legally be under the existing structure set forth in the California Vehicle Code. So I just wanted to start off by asking you a little bit about Assembly Bill 43. I know you introduced that this year, and I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about it, and specifically, how it gives control back to local governments when it comes to setting these speed limits.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the question. First of all, traffic safety is one of my top priorities, and it has been since my days on the Glendale City Council. Glendale has had a longtime traffic safety issue that has resulted in many of our community members being killed, quite honestly, killed or previously injured because of collisions between cars and pedestrians and bicycles. And just like in Burbank, the city council in Glendale has been very frustrated by existing state law that forces cities oftentimes to raise speed limits, even on residential streets, just to enforce existing speed limits. And just for the people who are watching at home, the way that works is that in order for a city to be able to enforce a speed limit, every 10 years, they have to do a traffic survey of how fast the cars are going, and if the cars are going, if 85% of the cars are going faster than the posted speed limit, the cities are actually forced to raise the speed limit, and that's without any regard to safety, with no regard towards accident data showing that a particular stretch of road is dangerous. It doesn't take into account the fact that people might be cutting through based on Waze or Google Maps and unfamiliar with the area. It doesn't take into account often the presence of horses or schools or hospitals or senior citizen homes, or all manner of things that would give cities a real compelling reason to cap or even lower speed limits. So what AB43 does is, first of all, it allows cities to take exactly some of those types of data into account, things like, is there a school? Is there a particularly vulnerable population on that street? Is there some engineering that the city has done that gives the city a reason why they should cap or lower a speed limit? For instance, did you recently put a bike lane in? And is there accident data that shows that the stretch of road is unsafe at a higher speed? This bill would give you some flexibility, not a ton of flexibility, but within about a five mile an hour amount of flexibility to cap or even lower speed limits when you do those traffic surveys. The bill also gives incentives for cities to do other types of traffic calming beyond speed limits, doing bulbouts, doing landscaping, doing medians, all sorts of things that we know can often slow traffic down in dangerous environments.
Thank you very much. And Assembly Member Friedman, I guess my next question would be, how does Assembly Bill 43 differ from prior attempts to give cities more control over the development of these local speed limits?
Thanks, and this is something that other council members before me have tried to do unsuccessfully. So the reason that I think it's going to work this time around is a few things. First of all, this is the first time that I know of that the bill is being carried by the Chair of the Transportation Committee, which is me now, so that gives it a little bit of a leg up. Secondly, unlike previous attempts, this legislation now is being backed by Caltrans and the California State Transportation Agency, which is CALSTA, have identified traffic safety this year as their number-one priority, and they've even created a new position titled Chief Safety Officer. Now, here's something that's pretty shocking. In the last 12 months, as you all know, that a lot less people are out driving because of COVID restrictions. People aren't going to work, and we have less cars on the road. What do you think has happened for traffic safety during that time of less traffic? I'll just cut to the chase. It's gotten significantly worse. As we have less cars on the road, what we've realized is that the thing that's keeping people from driving like complete maniacs on our streets has actually been traffic congestion. So people are driving faster exactly at a time when a lot of people are saying, hey, I don't have to go to the office today, maybe I'll take an hour and go for a walk, or maybe I'll go ride a bike, or teach my child to ride a bike. And that has led to an almost 100% increase in per capita traffic fatalities statewide. I mean, I don't have statistics in front of me, but I've seen them recently, they're new statistics, and they were worse than any of us thought was going to be. So I think we can make the case now that we need to take traffic, that we have to center traffic safety when it comes to our roads. That needs to be what we're looking at, the lens through which we look at all of the rules of the road, is does this make our roads safer or more dangerous for all users of the road, people in cars, people walking, people cycling? Many cities, city of Los Angeles, city of Glendale, have prioritized what they call Vision Zero, which is coming up with policies to reduce these traffic fatalities. And in this bill, we're not looking at superficial fixes, we are looking at very deep systemic problems like speeding laws, like how we do prioritize different rules of the road. And then lastly, we introduced this bill originally two years ago, and the then Chair of Transportation held the bill, but he did allow us to put together a Vision Zero Task Force that was made up of stakeholders from all across the state of California, representatives from AAA, from Caltrans, from Highway Patrol, from many of our local jurisdictions, including right here, our local jurisdictions. Glendale Police Chief was on the task force, many, many, many urban planners, traffic safety experts, the walk-bike groups were represented. We had everyone at the table for the first time, and they were at the table for a year. They had multiple, multiple meetings. They looked at data from across the nation that was emerging about best practices, and they sat down and they came to consensus. For the first time, we have broad consensus, I believe, on what we need to do in a very holistic, comprehensive way. So I have a lot of hope for this bill, and we're going to continue to work on it, and I would invite all of you to take a look at it, I mean, all of you in the city council and at home, and tell us what you think. And I will just lastly say that the interest we had in this legislation was really surprising. We had rural representatives, we had representatives calling us from cities I've never even heard of all across the state, asking to be a part of this, because this is a problem not just in Burbank and not just in Glendale, it's a problem across the state of California. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Assembly Member Friedman, and I want to thank you for the role that you've played in creating the Zero Traffic Fatalities Task Force. And, you know, I suppose my next question would be, you know, at least in my view, AB43 is a stepping stone, if you will, to many of the reforms that this task force envisions. So what would you foresee as, or what would you further recommend as additional reforms that we'll need to take in the years to come, and how can cities like the city of Burbank advocate for more local control when it comes to issues of traffic safety?
Thank you. Well, the amendments to the bill do grant wide authority for cities to have more local control over speed limits, and so hopefully you all can, you know, come on board and be supportive of this, because it does give you more tools. That's the idea here, is to give you more tools to look at your own traffic conditions and to work with your community about what you think is safe, not just in terms of speed limits, although that's part of it, but in terms of engineering so that you can make the roads just less conducive to speeding. We have other amendments that will now allow cities to reduce those speed limits as low as 12 miles an hour below the 85th percentile, which is much different than in the past where you might have had to raise speed limits in that case. And ultimately, we need to look at reforming traffic surveys and taking a safe systems approach to look at the activity of a street using base speed limits, similar to the National Association of City Transportation Officials July recommendation. So we do have a lot of work to do. I will tell you, there's also a bill that was just introduced this week by David Chu from San Francisco, looking at automated speed enforcement with a lot of very specific guardrails. So this is not sort of, not your red light camera, done again, this is a very specific way to use automated speed enforcement, not just to help slow the streets down, but also to reduce interactions between law enforcement and populations, which is, for many people, something that's very important to do right now, and it also can be used to help gather data, because it's very hard if you don't know how fast people are going in a particular area. It's hard sometimes to know how to prioritize your limited funds and your focus. So that's something that I would also recommend that you take a look at.
Thank you very much. And, you know, next I want to turn to a topic of conversation that I've had with some of my neighbors who are well-versed in what you're doing at the Transportation Commission. You know, fundamentally, when I talk to a lot of folks about local control, they're encouraged by it, they think it's a good thing, but one concern that I have heard raised is this idea of, well, you know, as it stands, most of our traffic studies are derived on the prevailing speed of traffic, right? You know, how many, how much, how fast the average driver is driving on our roads. One concern is, in the example that you gave, where we might impose a speed limit that's 12 miles per hour lower than that 85th percentile, might that have an adverse effect on traffic? You know, might that actually lead to more speed variances or more speeding in the area? I was just wondering if those concerns have been taken into consideration in the drafting of Assembly Bill 43 or any other potential legislation that might stem from the task force.
Thank you, and that is an excellent question, and that has been one of the arguments that's been used against these sorts of measures in the past. So because of that, and because this has come up a lot, there's actually been quite a bit of recent research looking into this. Researchers at the UC Institute of Traffic Studies put together a research synthesis on the effects of speed limits on speed for our task force, for the Zero Fatalities Task Force, and what they found is that research does not suggest that lowering speed limits increases speed variance. So that's not something that they've seen in the actual data when they look at it. Reducing speed limits reduces speed, it actually reduces speed variance and reduces the speed of the fastest drivers to a greater extent. So if you have a bunch of cars going fast, that sometimes encourages the other cars to go fast, but what the data shows is that actually those faster cars tend to go slower when the speed limit's set slower, so it pushes everybody down. Reducing speed limits on limited access roads by five miles an hour can reduce injuries between 8 and 15%, and this is important, because some studies show that are finding reductions as great as 28% and 29% in injuries, and that's because the faster you go, the injuries to pedestrians actually go up sort of exponentially, like the difference between a five mile an hour, being hit by a car at five miles an hour and being hit by a car at 15 miles an hour is profound, but when you start getting hit at higher rates of speed, your chances of even surviving that fall really dramatically. So we need to look not just at accident data, but at fatal accident data and at severe injury data. That's important, too, and the slower the traffic's going, when you have a lot of, you know, if you're in a situation where you're encountering a lot of pedestrians, there's a lot of reasons to get that traffic moving slower, because any accidents that happen are going to be that much deadlier. So in the same way, the studies show that fatalities may drop 10% to 30%, and there's even one outlier study that showed an 80% reduction in fatalities when you're reducing the speed limits, get this, only by five miles an hour. The five miles an hour difference, all the studies show between a 10 and 30% reduction in fatalities, some show as high as an 80% reduction just with that five mile an hour swing.
Two minutes left on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wrap up. I just wanted to thank you for introducing this bill, Assembly Member Friedman. I think it's incredibly exciting, not just for the sake of local control, but obviously, one concern that I have is if we base the speed limit based on how fast the average driver goes, over time, we might see that creeping upward, and that's not necessarily consistent with the prevailing conditions of the roadway. So I really appreciate you introducing this bill. One final question, does the bill define an increase in traffic-related crashes? Is that set forth in the bill?
Actually, that allows a lot of flexibility at the city level to make those sorts of definitions, and I will also say that what you just said about what's called "speed limit creep," there's an actual term about that, is a real thing, that when drivers start to drive even one mile an hour faster, people get used to it, and then it becomes two miles an hour faster, and then it becomes five miles an hour faster. And what happens, and what we've seen happening with the 85th percentile, is that the result is not that it keeps the speed limits flat, it actually keeps pushing the speed limits up, so that as you do those traffic surveys, what the data shows is that you will be increasing your speed limits. You will be forced through those surveys to consistently raise the speed limits on all of your streets, including your residential streets, including streets with, you know, vulnerable populations. So it is a real fear and something that makes this bill, I think, very important and very timely.
Well, may I wrap up, Mr. Mayor?
You've got 30 seconds, sir.
I will be quick. So Assembly Member Friedman, I just wanted to thank you. Obviously, issues of local control are near and dear to the heart of this council. I know that in 2018, you championed AB 2955, which allowed Burbank to take into consideration equestrian safety when looking at our Rancho master plan area. Thank you for introducing AB 43. Look forward to partnering with you in any way that we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. I would like to now invite Councilmember Springer to present the next item on our agenda this evening, an overview of Burbank's housing goals and current housing legislation. Councilmember Springer, you have the mic for 15 minutes. I'll give you a two-minute warning so you can wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for joining us for all of this and for the update on transportation. We have been proactively working on our housing goal of 12,000, 15 years. We committed to that in 2019, and we are committed to building neighborhoods and protecting all of our neighborhoods, multifamily, single family, and providing affordable opportunities for affordable housing at all levels, and for workforce housing also. And we appreciate the state legislature's focus. And we are committed to building neighborhoods and protecting all of our neighborhoods, multifamily, single family, and providing affordable opportunities for affordable housing at all levels and for workforce housing also. And we appreciate the state legislature's focus also on providing tools for us. And you know that we are great proponents of local control. And we are actually focused on that because we have a very high jobs to building ratio. And we have three MetroLink stations, and now we have, we have very decent access to the red line with Via and with our pink route. And, um, so we support legislation and programs that assist in providing housing at all income levels while promoting responsible development that not only protects our neighborhoods, but links this housing production to improvements in our transit system, local infrastructure and public service to ensure this development is sustainable. And there are three bills that we want you to know that we support. We support SB 15, Senator Portman Tino's bill on housing development incentives, rezoning of idle retail sites. And in the last legislative session, we supported SB 1299, which has been reintroduced as SB 15. And the bill would give cities grants for voluntarily rezoning idle retail sites instead of changing the character of existing residential neighborhoods. The bill would provide cities with financial incentives and options for, for creative reuse of these retail sites. I think we may all have the sentiment that we are over retail. We also support SB 5, Senator Atkins' bill on the Housing Bond Act. This bill would authorize the state to issue bonds to finance housing-related programs that serve the homeless and extremely low and very low income residents. We also support AB 1029, um, by Assembly Miller Mul, excuse me, Assemblymember Mullin. And this legislation would grant jurisdictions additional points in the scoring of program applications for housing and infrastructure programs if the jurisdiction has adopted pro housing policies that facilitate the planning, approval, or construction of housing. With the council's housing production goal of 12,000 units in the next 15 years, and with the city slated to update density bonus and inclusionary housing regulations this year, bills like AB 1029 reward cities for being proactive and indicate collaboration between the state and local governments. And we do ask for, we advocate for amendments to existing ADU legislation. We have, the city has received 728 applications for accessory dwelling units. Just in 2020, we received 318. We have 387 permits have been issued and 244 certificates of occupancy. So in, consistent with our legislative platform, we request that, well, we are advocating for limitations on floor area ratio, parking replacement, and ADU sizes to ensure these buildings are appropriate in scale to the existing single family homes. We also advocate for owner occupancy requirements. And also, we advocate for the removal of the 60-day shot clock for initial review of ADU requirements. This has created a burden on our city staff and resulted in the further expenditure of city resources. We've had to hire consultants to help us with that. And so this is to ensure the city's processing timeframes meet consumer demand and state requirements. And while we're talking about bills, I just want to bring up SB 765 that deals with setbacks where an ADU is going in. And the way I understand it, it will potentially revert the setbacks to what those are existing in the single family neighborhood. So if they were reduced to four feet, potentially they go back to five feet. And also, in that bill, it says that topographic elements will be taken into consideration. And so I'm wondering if you have a take on, on that bill, if, if you can comment on it, not right now, but also.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to. That's actually my bill, which I introduced with Senator Henry Stern. And we introduced that bill actually to address some of the concerns that we heard from our communities, from Glendale, and I'm sure from Burbank, which is that the state required a sort of one size fits all side setback for ADUs that doesn't respect any setbacks that you might have in your single family neighborhoods. And what, the result of that is that in some places, you know, you, you create what I call the, the jerky neighbor problem, where someone might have a really large backyard, but they choose to put their ADU right next to their neighbor's house as opposed to like sort of somewhere else in their yard. And so what this says is that on large lots, the city would have more ability to set setbacks. As long as it didn't stop the production of an ADU, it would give the cities more flexibility to enforce setbacks that you already have in your single family neighborhoods, as opposed to taking a state setback, it actually might be a lot less than what you would require right now under your ordinances for single family neighborhoods. So it's meant to give cities more flexibility and to not have that sort of state one size fits all. And it would probably, probably, my guess is if the bill gets through committee at all, it would probably be amended to be just large lots. And it will, it already has language that says that you can't use it to stop someone from building an ADU. So if they absolutely have to use that smaller setback, you still have to grant them that. But then it gives you the flexibility that if they could put the ADU somewhere else, you could require them to do that, to respect the side setbacks you could already have in your neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. And do you have, can you describe some potentials topographic issues that the bill addresses? Is it hillside or?
It's probably meant to give more flexibility in your hillside neighborhoods so that you can put an ADU somewhere that maybe has less of a visual impact, um, or, you know, is other types of impacts, impacts on neighbors, that, you know, these are side setbacks. So I would think that they're talking more about impacts, you know, on someone's swimming pool, on someone's yard, that kind of thing. Really to give you some of the same discretion that you have when you're citing houses, where you're trying to do it in a way where you respecting, you know, respecting the, the properties around and do something that's, you know, lower impact, particularly in your hillside areas. So the bill is really meant to give the cities back the flexibility that you.
So ADU legislation. Okay, thank you. And I'll bring to our attention Assembly Constitutional Amendment 7, ACA 7, that is particularly interesting to me. And apparently it seeks to reinstate local control of ordinances, zoning and land use issues. And so I can ask staff to come back and educate us all on that. Because that one sounds very interesting. And also, while you're here, I wanted to, I just finished reading a really devastating report entitled, I mean, this apparently is brand new, and it's real dense, so I have to read it again, entitled, "Beyond Wall Street Landlords: How Private Equity in the Rental Market Makes Housing Unaffordable, Unstable, and Unhealthy." And basically, it discusses the commoditization of housing, which has resulted, I mean, this is empirically supported, higher rental rates, higher eviction rates, and lower maintenance and absentee ownership. And I bring that up because it's expected that COVID is going to present another opportunity for that, another opportunity for further commoditization of housing. And so I think we all need to be aware of that at both the local, state, and federal level, so that we can keep our renters, our homeowners, and our mom and pops whole, housed and whole. And this study has six or seven ideas for moving forward. Um, and it's very important because everybody, all of our residents are important to us, our renters and our homeowners and our mom and pops. And two thirds of our smaller, older apartment complexes are owned by mom and pops. And what happens with the commoditization, the ownership form changes to a corporate ownership. And the biggest transfer has been in the unit, in properties from, with five to 24 units. So it's not just large properties. And so I just want us all to be aware of that. And at the local, state, and federal level. And so now I have a couple of questions. What priorities do you see in the legislature in regards to housing?
Thank you. And thanks for the question, and thanks for bringing up the, I don't know if it's a study or a book, I, I think I missed that about the commoditization, but I'll try to get my hands on that. This has been a huge issue since the, the, the financial recession in the 2009, 2008, when some of these very large equity firms came in and bought up a lot of houses that were in foreclosure. And so this is definitely something that concerns me greatly, and I totally agree with you, that that sort of commoditization is bad for, for renters, for communities. And I will mention that last year, we did pass a bill by Nancy Skinner from San Francisco, which is now law, that says that when a apartment building goes on the market, that cities have the ability now to buy that building first. So if it's an older building and you have money in your housing authority, for instance, you have the opportunity to buy that to use as affordable housing before it goes, you, you would get the right to first refusal. And that's how I understand the bill. So that might be something that you should take a look at because that was introduced specifically to give cities a chance to balance some of that commoditization as these properties come on the market. So just wanted to let you know that. But getting back to your question about priorities, housing continues to be a huge priority. The Senate has introduced a package of bills, you mentioned a few of them, I think they're bills sort of one through 11, that they're prioritizing that all deal with housing. So it, it's still a, a major priority. And here in the LA, in LA County, we have an LA County delegation that's made, it's bicameral, it's made up of assembly and senators, and we meet every few weeks. And we have been emphasizing housing and homelessness as our top priority. And we have introduced, just with the LA County members, 31 bills relating to housing and homelessness, which really hard to disentangle those two subjects right there, they're kind of tied together at the hip. And the bills range from streamlining administration, to getting more funding, to changing zoning, and sort of everything in between. So there's a really big range of different attempts to, to look at this issue. So I definitely recommend that you take a look at all the bills and, you know, examine the approaches. And, and by the way, you don't always have to, of course, ask for the state to move in. There's a lot of things you can do at the local level with regards to this as well, and I encourage you to be as proactive as you can. And I will also say that I commend you for the changing, of changes of your general plan and your housing element to add the increased housing capacity. It's exactly what we've asked cities to do. And I completely agree that cities that go, that do that work, that set up the zoning, that, that do it in a way that's equitable, that's fair to everybody, that doesn't, you know, uh, put too much of the burden, let's say, on disadvantaged neighborhoods, but that really tries to use that exercise to build community, to improve areas, to remove blight, and certainly to add needed housing, should be rewarded for that. And so I appreciate your efforts and I, and doing that at the local level, I, I believe as someone who comes out of local government, gets the best results. Because you know where adding the housing is appropriate. You know where you can build neighborhoods, reduce blight, create more walkable, bikeable communities, and you're doing that hard work. And I want to thank you for that.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Thank you. And, and I think we've made it clear that we oppose SB 9 and SB 10. Just.
I think SB 10 might be the bill that I did vote against last year about lot subdivisions. So the other, I think that that's that bill, but the other ones I haven't seen yet. So thank you for letting me know.
Okay, because it takes away local control, and I happen to think that facilitate the tran, a further transfo of wealth from our families and shut out mom and dad who didn't want to buy a home. And so I have another question, if I have time. Do you anticipate policy or budget bills that would provide further incentives for us to advance our housing goals?
So yeah, the Governor's 2021 proposed budget includes funding for local governments, $750 million for Project Home Key through grants to local governments to purchase housing options, $750 million in grant funding to counties to purchase property to use for behavioral health services, which is, of course, incredibly important to help with homelessness. So thanks again for the questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. I now would like to ask Councilmember Anthony to join us and lead the discussion in the homelessness initiatives by the city of Burbank. Councilmember Anthony, you have 15 minutes, and I'll give you a two minute warning. Thank you, sir. The mic is yours.
Mr. Mayor. Hello, Assemblymember. Thank you for joining us today. I didn't realize we, we actually matched colors today. That was random. It's funny, we were talking about transportation earlier, my son is in the other room playing with his trains, so he enjoys his, his transportation. I wanted to talk to you about homelessness today. I have, you know, personal experience with that. I did live through a number of times in my life experiencing homelessness. You know, here in Burbank, the 2020 homeless count, we had a population of 291 people living in our streets and parks and in their cars. That was a, that was a increase of nine people since 2019, which doesn't sound like a lot, and, and actually, I think that's a pretty decent number compared to the rest of LA County. But, you know, the, that was pre-COVID. In fact, from our Street Plus, that's our team that goes around and, you know, helps the homeless here in Burbank, we, we saw an increase of 88 people. That's who they were able to assist, obtain some type of services over the last two years. So that's a huge increase. And, you know, the, the homeless counts have been really shuttered this last year because of COVID. But I'm, I'm certain that if we looked everywhere else across the state, across the country, we would have seen also these dramatic increases in numbers. Our homeless plan adopted in 2017 detailed strategies to prevent and combat homelessness. And here's just a couple of the things we're working on. One of them is a storage unit. The city has provided a storage unit for individuals experiencing homelessness. And these individuals, they carry their stuff with them, they have them in shopping carts and plastic bags. And it's, you know, sometimes they have like very like expensive personal items and even vital records, driver's license passports, paperwork that they need to get services. And, you know, the city has identified a lot on the corner of Front Street and Verdugo over by the, I believe that's the, by the piano store, if I'm not mistaken. This is a potential site for the storage unit. And the proposed program, it would help up to 60 on-house people, and each one would get approximately a 60-gallon container to store their items, and they would have specified time parameters. And that's, that's a big space, you know, that's where you can keep a lot of stuff. And we're hoping that the state would allocate more funding towards these types of, of projects and great grant opportunities that we can find for. In addition, we also tried to get some transitional facilities built. One of our goals is to build, obtain temporary transitional homeless housing. And we're looking for a place, we, you know, staff was looking for existing hotels, even placement for like the new tiny homes movement, that's a big, big thing, it's been helping a lot of cities, or even just existing buildings that could be easily converted. And one of the, one of the things that we've been looking at, we have a lot of Caltrans properties in Burbank that are just not being used, like empty lots. And so we were hoping maybe that could be, you know, given to the city or relinquished, that kind of thing. Separately, we were partnering with Burbank Housing Corporation at the end of last year to try to get the Scott Motel purchased. We got about $2.8 million grant, and that was from the state's Home Key program. And it was a little problematic because during the due diligence period, there were concerns about the high cost of ongoing services, and the deadline was like too short of a window. It was December 31st, and we couldn't get stuff in line, so we had to walk away from that whole deal, which is just, was just very disappointing. Um, you know, one of those major hurdles is finding that funding and finding those mechanisms to get those spaces, not just for housing, but for storage space and all of that. And, you know, the Project Room Key is winding down. It was really helpful to us. But we do have Street Plus, they've placed 20 Burbank homeless people into programs, and they assisted over 88 people since 2019, separate from their Project Room Key initiative, on and painting housing, home, food, clothing, and medical services. So we, you know, we'd like to advocate for the continuation of a project like Room Key, or if that one could keep going, and additional funding for, you know, purchasing, you know, grants that we can buy these places and, and get these storage facilities up and running. So, you know, I'll, I'll do some of the questions on that. Is, is there anything that you're putting together right now or that you're working with specifically for homeless funding to either get, you know, the storage units to convert, you know, to buy motels or lots or properties, or to, to push Caltrans in relinquishing these outdated properties, you know, that nobody's using and that kind of stuff? Anything that you're working on or anything that you see coming down the pipe?
Thanks. And thank you for sharing your experiences as well. You know, it's. You know, it's unique, and I think that you're a very important voice in this space, given your experiences with homelessness. So thank you for bringing that up. As I said before, homelessness is definitely one of the top priorities of the legislature, and I can say for our district and for the LA members, outside of COVID and COVID impacts, I would say that homelessness remains the number one issue. It's a growing problem, it's a problem that despite the resources that have been spent on it, and despite quite a lot of success in getting people housed, there's just been this sort of tsunami of more people coming onto the streets, a problem really exacerbated by mental health issues, and I would say also exacerbated by the amount of substance abuse and sort of cheap and very potent drugs that are, that are out there, addicting people, and our, our almost inability to help people once there's substance abuse, you know. Even people who are highly motivated and have means to get themselves off of drugs, even people who pay for themselves to go to rehab and who've hit bottom and really want to get out, even those people have so much trouble staying sober and staying clean. To say nothing of people who don't have resources, don't have a home, are surrounded by drugs all the time on the street, those are just almost overwhelming odds for people. And it's, and given the addictiveness of these drugs, you know, this is like not your daddy's drugs, I mean, these drugs today are designed to be incredibly, incredibly addictive. So that's a challenge going into the future that I'm going to tell you about some legislation, but honestly, I don't even know how you write a bill to combat that kind of addictiveness and that kind of amount of illegal substances on the streets. And that's a huge, huge challenge that I think we all have to work on together. So let me tell you first about the budget, some actions in the budget, and I'll tell you briefly about some legislation, and then we can go from there. So in, since 2018, we have spent $1.5 billion just money going to local governments through the Homeless Emergency Aid Programs and the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. So quite a lot of money passed through directly to local governments to deal with homelessness. In 2020, California allocated $150 million to Project Room Key. An additional $30 million was also given in flexible grants, an additional $62 million for Project Room Key in November. And for those of you at home who don't know what this is, this is a program to help cities and counties put homeless people in motels and hotel rooms and just keep them housed while we find more permanent housing for them, and to find permanent housing. Now, Governor Newsom's 2020 One Budget Proposal includes $10 billion, that's billion with a B, for housing and homelessness services, so a huge, huge amount of funding. And that includes $1.75 billion to further develop a broad range of housing options, $750 million for Project Home Key through grants to local governments to purchase housing options, so that would be money to you, I would, I would hope directly to you, to try to buy some of those buildings as they're put on the market or foreclosed on, that I just told you about. And then another $750 million in grant funding for counties to purchase property to use for behavioral health services, again, to help with people's, the issues that sometimes keep people trapped in a cycle of homelessness. Now, in terms of legislation, there is a lot out there, but I'm just going to highlight a few. AB 369 by, now Senator Comlager, makes it easier to deliver medical and behavioral health care services to homeless Californians. One of the things that I believe this bill does is it allows for what's called street psychiatry, where you can have therapists and psychiatrists go into the street to deliver services to people where they live, as opposed to waiting for someone to come into a facility and get care. AB 1340, which is authored by myself and Miguel Santiago, who represents Skid Row, changes the definition of gravely disabled to include consideration of the individual's urgent medical needs as part of the conservatorship process while maintaining all existing due process and civil liberties. And in fact, we had tried to do this bill two years ago and weren't able to move it forward and have added more safeguards in this version. We've also added more services in this version of the bill. So the bill also requires that individuals leaving a 72-hour hold are connected with needed services upon relief. So when someone's taken in, and the 72, two-hour hold means that they are presenting an immediate danger to themselves or others. So these are people who law enforcement and a judge says, these people are basically at high risk for killing themselves or killing someone else or hurting somebody else, you know, it's someone who's waving a knife around in traffic, for instance, could be put on a 72-hour hold. A mentally ill person who's brandishing a firearm at somebody could be, if they consider that it's a mental health incident, but they're in imminent danger to themselves and others. So now this bill would say that if, once they're released, they have to be connected with services. It also would allow counties to use Mental Health Services Act funds for conservatorship-related services. Now, just to put this in context, this bill is not intended for the average person even who might be going into conservatorship. To be used for this bill, you have to make, meet a few criteria. Number one, you basically have to be homeless, this is for homeless individuals. Number two, you have to have two things together. You number one have to have a mental illness that is so severe that you basically are incapable of making decisions about your own health. So this isn't just someone who's homeless, and it doesn't, who's, let's say, a schizophrenic who's homeless, they wouldn't even qualify for this bill. You have to have another set of criteria, which is that a judge has to find that if you are not put into a conservatorship, you're basically, your life is in jeopardy because of an underlying medical condition. So what this is for is people who have underlying untreated diabetes, heart disease, cancer, who are not treating their illnesses because their mental illness is so severe and they're on the streets. And I would tell you that there are extremely legitimate and well-placed concerns about all types of conservatorship. People who are disability advocates have very, very important, you know, worries about these kinds of bills, worries about abuses, worries about people who are mentally ill but really should be able to make their own decisions despite that, or who are being considered mentally ill and really, maybe they're not really mentally ill and not enough to be in a conservatorship. All of that is something that needs to be voiced, all of that needs to be taken into account with this kind of legislation. And I will say that watching people who clearly have no idea where they are, no idea, and who can barely feed themselves and clothe themselves, who are constantly victimized on the streets, who have no chance of getting access to services, and who we know are going to be dead because of that condition, is not humane. It's not humane and is not acceptable. And this is the only way that I can see of getting those people some help. I've had two family members in the last 20 years or so who both were, who were diagnosed with serious mental illness right as they sort of became college age, let's say. And that's very typically when schizophrenia manifests. In one case it was schizophrenia, the other was very severe bipolar disease. And it was very, very difficult to get them to sort of go into treatment, but once they did, that treatment saved their lives. They have both gone on now to get advanced degrees. One just got her, got her master's in social work, actually, and is working with people with, you know, a range of disabilities. And the other one got a PhD in library sciences and, you know, has an amazing career and is getting married. And, you know, he was so severely schizophrenic at one point that we just didn't know what would happen with him, and it took quite a long time of a different, you know, set of medication after medication. But there is light at the end of the tunnel for a lot of people, but we need to be willing to invest in them, you know, put the, put the time, put the money, and to do things maybe that even feel uncomfortable. But these are lives, you know, worth trying to save.
Two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Assemblymember, for bringing up conservatorship. One of the things that I wanted to talk to you about, I know you and I have had this conversation before, my great uncle Nick Petrus wrote The Lanchman-Petrus Short Act, and a lot of it, a lot of his regret on that writing was that it was a real one-size-fits-all kind of law for people who are, you know, absolutely in need of these services, and then people who shouldn't be under a conservatorship at all, you know, even if you're a world famous pop singer that needs to get out from under this thing. What I'm hoping, and there's two bills I would love for you to look at, SB 340, which allows family and friends and acquaintances to testify at a conservatorship hearing. One of the problems we have, you know, getting, you know, unhoused individuals these kinds of services is that we can't get ahold of their family, we can't get ahold of their friends. But we have outreach teams, we have social workers, and I think that the bill that allows psychiatrists and therapists to be out in the street, if SB 340 can allow those advocates, people who have interacted with these individuals time and time and time again, are allowed to come in and testify, because right now, it's basically the person on their own in a room with a judge, and the judge is trying to figure everything out, and they've just met this person, it's very difficult. One of the other bills
Thirty seconds.
SB 724, thank you. SB 724, which allows the conservatee to bring in their own legal counsel, and someone who can talk to the judge and say, hey, this is what we need, this is what it is, as opposed to just getting appointed a public counsel. So I'd love for you to take a look at those two bills. And any funding you can get
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony, you're now getting into the Vice Mayor's time, sorry. Thank you, sir. I gotta keep track of the time.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'd now like to invite Vice Mayor Telemontis to present the next item regarding Burbank's transportation and development projects. Vice Mayor, you have 15 minutes, and I'll give you the two-minute warning. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mic is yours.
Good evening, Assemblymember. Nice to see you, and thank you for meeting with us. It's always nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, Vice Mayor.
In my presentation, I'm going to focus on connecting Burbank jobs to reliable transit with long-range planning and future projects on different fronts. Our main project, one of our priorities, is the I-5 Empire Interchange Project, which is currently under construction. The freeway project includes several multimodal benefits, including adding nearly two miles of metro link double-track and eliminating a deadly rail crossing, improving transit and bike connections across I-5, and completing the HOV lane network in the San Fernando Valley. Despite these benefits, several incomplete project elements have caused impacts to infrastructure within the city of Burbank, which include damage to local streets and lack of landscaping along the railroad right-of-way. Staff members have been meeting regularly to discuss and resolve issues related to this long-term project. The council I-5 Subcommittee consisting of myself and Councilmember Springer have met with Senator Portantino and Supervisor Barker to secure funding for Burbank's unmet needs. Recently, the Metro Board approved $73 million in funding towards completion of the project. The contractor said, if you don't pay me, if we don't secure funding by April 1st, I'm walking, I'm not going to come back for another two to three years to rebuild the bridge. So you understand it's very important to, not only to Burbank, but the region as well. So metro, loan, Caltrans, local funding from the San Fernando Valley COG, which was to be paid back in 10 years. In addition to cities' unmet needs, the city has spent several million dollars in local funds during the course of the project's development that have not been reimbursed. One of the first topics I'm going to touch on, and we've got, I've got several things to bring it to your attention, is what we're doing here in Burbank. Obviously, we have a sustainable transportation. We're focusing cars and trucks generating millions of tons of carbon dioxide every year. Burbank's community-owned utility, Burbank Water and Power, understands that we play a critical part in reducing greenhouse gases like CO2 emissions in our community. Burbank supports a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in the transportation sector by encouraging electric vehicle adoption in our community. As part of this initiative, the city installed 47 AV charging stations at 14 sites in high-traffic locations, with plans to install more. This amounts to a reduction of 780 metric tons of CO2 emissions. Another thing that we've done here in Burbank is the Burbank Channel Bikeway Project. In February 2021, the city opened the Burbank Channel Bikeway to the public, an off-street bike pedestrian path that runs for over three-quarters of a mile along the Burbank Western Flood Control Channel from Olive to Elamita. The project included the construction and installation of a 10,000-square-foot modular retaining wall system for the path, picking railing and cable railing, over 60 trees, and 8,000 native plants, a recycled water irrigation system, and traffic signals in high visibility crosswalks. I'm just trying to update you on what's happening here in Burbank. Retail and media in Burbank, the city continues to attract new restaurants, retail, and other businesses. Recently, Netflix signed a lease for 171,000 square feet for its new animation studio at Burbank Empire Center, the biggest new office lease in Los Angeles County in 2020. The city is attracting new retail and restaurants, including Home Goods, Finney's Craft House, and Benzo Senior Farms, and many more. These local amenities support jobs and residents and keep trips local in Burbank. Now, part of our long, long-range planning and future projects, we have a greenhouse reduction plan. This document is a tool for the city to quantify its share of statewide greenhouse gases emissions, establish a local emissions reduction target, and establish actionable steps towards that goal. The greenhouse gas reduction plan will also enable development streamlining opportunities for future discretionary projects under secret. The city has held numerous workshops to solicit community input on the plan, which will be finalized summer 2021. The Downtown Burbank Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan, the city received a grant from Metro to prepare a new specific plan that encompasses downtown Burbank and the downtown Burbank metro line station, and will include an analysis of existing and proposed land uses, infrastructure, transportation, and opportunities for infill development housing. The plan will also take into account amenities for various mobile users in the downtown Burbank area, expected to be completed December of 2021. We're also work, staff's also working on the Golden State Specific Plan. This document was applied to the Golden State District, south and east of the Burbank-Hollywood Airport, and outlines a plan for future development in the area. The plan encompasses 600 acres and includes high-speed rail station. Recently, the city council established a vision, guiding principles, and preferred land use approach for the project. Staff is currently working with project consultants and identifies district-wide mobility improvements, and the final plan will be presented to the council at the end of 2021. So we've got major developments right now, I want to just mention two, just to make you aware what's happening here in Burbank, give you an update. First Street Village, located on First Street between Palm and Magnolia, First Street Village is a mixed-use project consisting of three six-story buildings with 275 multifamily apartments on the upper floors, and up to 18,876 square feet of retail and commercial space on the ground floor. Anticipated opening date is late 2023. The next project is Avion Burbank. Avion is located in Hollywood Way. The project is a 61-and-a-half-acre mixed industrial office, retail, and hotel project. The site is adjacent to the airport and surrounded by industrial and storage uses as well as vacant land. The project includes construction of six industrial flex buildings totaling 1,4,307 square feet, nine creative office buildings of 142,250 square feet total, and two retail restaurant buildings, so approximately 15,475 square feet, and a hotel with 150 rooms. The project was approved by the city council in April of 2019, and construction is expected to be completed in 2021. Nearly all nine of the commercial buildings have been leased, erected, and developers continue to secure tenants. Amazon has signed a lease for space within Avion for a new delivery station. So that's very exciting. The next project is Lactera, at 777 North Front Street, that's along the freeway. A mixed-use project with 573 residential units, a hotel with 307 rooms, and 1,067 square feet of ground-floor retail space on a vacant seven-acre site. The residential portion is proposed to be an eight-story podium building with one level of underground parking. Hotel would be a seven-story building. The subject property is in the downtown commercial zone, as designated in the city's general plan. The project was approved by the city council in December of 2019, and construction has started. The fourth project, and the last one that I want to bring to your attention, is the Warner Brothers Second Century, very exciting. As the media capital of the world, Burbank will now have an iconic building designed by renowned architect Frank Gehry and developed by Worth Real Estate Group. Consisting of two towers, the new campus will allow for increased collaboration and interaction for the Warner Brothers. Buildings permits for both towers have been issued, and construction is anticipated to be completed by 2023. I know I was a little lengthy, Assemblymember, but we just wanted to bring all these items to your attention, just to bring you an update into what we're doing here in Burbank, and we're very proud of that. But I've got a couple of questions. As Chair of the Assembly Transportation Committee, how can you help the city advocate for Caltrans to honor its commitments to complete the I-5 project as promised and address the city's unmet needs? That's one.
The I-5 project
The I-5 project, one day we'll all say, I survived the I-5 project.
We'll have t-shirts like that.
We'll all say that. Where do I even start? Well, this project has been such a, I think, such a mishandled project from the start, from a Caltrans side. It's just gone on forever. The signage has been terrible. They did a lot of stuff without consulting the neighborhoods. I mean, going back to when I was on the Glendale City Council, I remember them coming in and ripping out a bunch of landscaping before they told people who lived literally right next to the landscaping, without telling them they were gonna do that, and then promising to replace it with large, mature native plants. And what have they put in? I think ice plants or something. I mean, it's really been a tough project, but I do think that there is some light at the end of the tunnel. I will say that now that I'm Chair of the Transportation Committee, I have a lot better ways of helping to advocate for these projects being finished and that they are more respectful to the communities they go through. And I would invite you, you know, not just now, but you know, going back to involve us, you know, when you're having issues, and to reach out to us and let us know so that we can advocate on your behalf. Because if we don't know about the communication that you're having with Caltrans and where it's falling short, it's very hard for us to intervene on our end. So please do let us know as soon as you think there's any kind of disconnect or any kind of a problem. Now, I do have a good working relationship with Caltrans' new director, Taks Omechakin, and I also get to serve as an ex officio member on the California Transportation Committee, which is very exciting. So I do get to have a lot more of a voice in these projects. That committee, just so you know, that commission allocates the SB 1 funding for local and state projects, and that's a lot of the money that goes towards your road repair. Now, I've already met with the Caltrans Director about the I-5 project, and I'm going to be attending my first commission meeting later this month. And that's a good place for me to voice any ongoing issues, to make sure that the commissioners are aware of that. I think that Caltrans' lack of follow-through is really unacceptable, and we have been meeting with the commission and Caltrans and LA Metro to discuss options going forward, both for Burbank and for other communities, so that they don't have to go through this with Caltrans. And I'm going to continue to meet with Caltrans and the commission about this particular project, about the I-5, until we understand what their timeline is and we can verify their timelines, that everybody knows what's gonna happen every step of the way and when, and so that we get real date certainties to them, so that we can hold them to it. So, yes, this is something that I have been keeping an eye on long before I was even in the legislature, and I never would have thought this project would still be at the stage that it's at at this point.
Two minutes.
I agree. I was at the grand opening, I mean, the groundbreaking with Supervisor Antonovich back in 2011. Long time. Just to give you an update on the bridge, we were told by Caltrans that it's gonna be opening up late August, early September. So we'll invite you, make sure that you're there as well.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all for now. Thank you, and thank you very much for taking your time to be with us.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And thanks for the update, showing us the projects.
It was lengthy, and I know I've got a little, but anyway, I just felt it was important to share with you. It was important to share. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, can you watch my time of 15 minutes and give me a two-minute warning? Thank you. Assemblymember, I'm just gonna kind of go over some of our pandemic response and economic recovery, and then I have three questions at the end. The COVID pandemic has had many negative social and economic effects, and through it all, cities and jurisdictions have remained on the front lines of the pandemic response. Through various safer-at-home orders and despite the economic impacts of the pandemic, the city of Burbank has continued to provide essential services to its community. The city of Burbank has seen declines in sales tax, service charges, transit occupancy tax, TOT, and transit parking tax, TPT, revenues, and has taken steps such as implementing a hiring freeze on non-critical positions and the use of one-time funds to avoid across-the-board budget cuts this fiscal year. Burbank's COVID Economic Recovery Plan. In May of 2020, the city council approved the Economic Recovery Plan to, among other things, help its residents and its businesses access information about recovery efforts and funding, promote Burbank's businesses and tourism, and assist the most vulnerable members of our community with financial support through the use of eviction orders, county, state, and federal grants, and partnerships with service organizations. As a city, we continue to update and implement its Economic Recovery Plan. Here are just some ways in which we have helped the residents and businesses weather this impact of the pandemic. Eviction Moratorium. As applied under state and county orders, the city of Burbank instituted several eviction moratoriums for its residents and commercial tenants who were financially impacted by COVID-19 to ensure housing security for the most vulnerable. The city's residential eviction moratorium was first adopted on March 17, 2020, and ended on September 30, 2020, as it was superseded by AB 3088. Our commercial eviction moratorium is set to expire at the end of this month. My notes, there we go. Parking and utility shut-offs. The city temporarily suspended utility shut-offs due to non-payment and street-sweeping and parking citations in residential areas when stay-at-home orders were in effect last year. Small business assistance and rent assistance. The city utilized its CDBG CARES Act funding to provide forgivable loans to businesses and micro entrepreneurs, enterprises, and residential assistance for the struggling residential tenants. Outdoor fitness and business operations. The city facilitated the use of our ball fields for outdoor fitness classes by permit only, and allowed the use of private parking lots for restaurants, fitness uses, hair salons, and barber shops to operate outdoors. Burbank Tech Talk Events. The city provided free winna bars, winnas, I'm sorry, webinars, sorry, tongue-tied, to small businesses focusing on small business assistance. 708 attendees viewed those tech talks. COVID-19 Job Loss Bill Credit Program. Burbank Water and Power is utilizing a short-term 1.5 million public benefits fund to provide a residential COVID-19 assistance program for electric customers experiencing unemployment. Recovery Task Force. The city council will be holding approximately nine focus groups meetings with various sector businesses to hear what they are doing to survive and growing during this recovery phase, with asking, how can we as a city partner with them to assist? Closure of San Fernando Boulevard. In response to the governor's order shutting down indoor dining operations for restaurants last year, the city of Burbank issued an emergency order closing portions of San Fernando Boulevard to vehicle traffic in downtown Burbank. This closure allowed restaurants to apply for a permit to expand their outdoor dining services on the sidewalk and into the parking spaces fronting their businesses. The P-Bid also established outdoor communal dining areas for the patrons. San Fernando is currently open to traffic in a hybrid configuration that accommodates parklets for outdoor dining. And here's a great success story on behalf of the staff and the council. Senior Citizen Nutrition Program and Project Hope. Prior to the pandemic, the city provided meals and home-delivered meals for seniors from three locations, the Jocelyn Adult Center, the Tuttle Senior Center, and McCambridge Recreation Center. Due to stay-at-home orders and guidance regarding social distancing, coupled with the high risk of our older community members, the city was forced to pivot its elderly nutrition program to heavily rely on home-delivered meals. The Parks and Recreation Department collaborated with the Burbank Bus to help deliver meals to seniors. So we're thinking outside the box. The Senior Nutrition Program provided a total of 12,700 meals to seniors in February. On average, 2,083 meals were provided to 365 seniors weekly through the home-delivery meal program. In addition, an average of 191 seniors were provided 1,092 meals each week at our drive-thru service at McCambridge Park. Since the onset of this pandemic, the city's Elderly Nutrition Program, ENP, has received county allowances from FF-CRA and CARES Act monies to be able to continue to provide and meet the demand for free home-delivered meals. The city is also assisting seniors via Project Hope, a program that pairs seniors with volunteers to assist with running errands, grocery shopping, and, most important, companionship. The program currently has 45 active volunteers assisting 82 seniors. Since March 2020, Project Hope volunteered and have dedicated over 2,500 hours to most important helping our seniors. So here's three questions, ma'am. What state programs do you anticipate will provide for small business assistance? Number two, residential assistance? And number three, direct assistance to the city of Burbank? Mike, ma'am, your mic?
It had to happen, and it was me this time. It wouldn't be an online meeting if someone didn't do that. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for outlining all of the great work, and I really mean that, that Burbank has done to protect their residents. It's really an impressive amount of care that you took into crafting that, and I was very happy to see it. And I think that you have done an amazing job at shielding your community from a lot of the really bad impacts of the pandemic, you know, the medical impacts on one side, but then there's all these other repercussions with job losses and businesses and distance learning and everything else. And you've done, I think, provided a really excellent safety net for your residents, so thank you for that. So I'm not gonna talk about the federal programs, because I think people know about that, and I don't actually have a lot of details, but I think all of our business owners should be familiar with the PPP programs through the CARES Act, some of the direct reimbursements that were given through the federal government, as well as the pandemic relief money that went through our EDD department, or didn't go through our EDD department in some cases, but that was meant to go through our EDD department. So I'm gonna talk just about state efforts now. So we allocated, just at the state level, $2.1 billion in grants to support small businesses, nonprofits, and cultural organizations this cycle, and that's on top of the $500 million that was appropriated for grants to small businesses and nonprofits in December. So quite a lot of money going directly out to businesses. And for the first time, nonprofits and cultural organizations, museums and the like, which were cut out of some of the CARES Act funding. So I was one of the members that advocated to make sure that we don't forget about those institutions, so many of which were holding on by a shoestring before the pandemic and really are in dire straits now. We passed $2 billion in tax cuts focused on small businesses and $116 million in regulatory relief. And then for tenants and landlords, as you know, we had done legislation for an eviction moratorium last year, and then in January of this year, we extended the eviction moratorium with an additional $2.6 billion, and that's billion with a B, dollars in assistance for tenants and for landlords, so that we gave money directly to tenants, but we also made sure that landlords, as best we could, especially the small landlords, could still pay their mortgages, so that we didn't have, you know, the problem that Councilmember Springer was talking about of our small mom and pops being unable to pay because the tenants are unable to pay and going into foreclosure and having the big equity and hedge funds coming in and buying up those properties. And in terms of local governments, under Governor Newsom's proposed budget, there's funding that goes directly towards local governments across a number of programs, including housing and homelessness, which we talked about, disaster assistance, wildfire prevention and response, and some others. So I was, I do know that there's some money in the federal government going to local governments as well, but not as much as many of us had advocated for. I was one of the many members who had asked the federal government that as they did the CARES Act and did relief going into this year, that they didn't forget about local governments, because you all have been providing services many times far beyond what you're used to providing, and at the same time that your revenues are falling. So, and you provide those services along with the counties directly to constituents. You're really the front lines for people in the community, and it's really important that you have the resources that you need to protect people and to help your constituents. So I'm happy to see that you will be getting funding, and hopefully more will be coming from the federal government as well.
Before I move on to the next item, Assemblymember, thank you very much for that information, but I wanted to acknowledge you publicly. Thank you very much for our last meeting with Vice Mayor and I to talk about your legislative platform and what you're working on on behalf of the people of Burbank. We have actually included an agenda item in case you wish to discuss to the entire council your legislative priorities or provide any update. I give you the mic, ma'am.
Thank you. And again, thank you so much for inviting me to be here with you tonight, and I want to thank all the community members who are taking the time on a Thursday night to watch this and to find out what's happening locally and at the state level. I hope that this has been informative, and you're always welcome to reach out to me directly into my office, and that goes for all of you. You're all my partners in this, and you're all my friends, and I want to make sure that we continue to work closely together. We need to, because these are really, really challenging times. So I did want to update you on what I've been working on. So just, first of all, I wanted to let everyone know out there that I am chairing the Transportation Committee this year after chairing the Natural Resources Committee for the past year and a half, but I am staying on natural resources, so I will continue to work on the issues that are within the jurisdiction of that committee as well, being things like our recycling crisis and plastics crisis, wildfire issues, air quality issues, and clean energy. But as Chair of Transportation, that gives me a whole huge opportunity to work on some of the most pressing issues here in the region, which is mobility and transportation, as well as air quality and sustainability, which have really been hindered by our lack of progress in the transportation space. I also sit on the Water, Parks, and Wildlife Committee, on the Budget Committee, which is new to me, and on the Arts and Entertainment Committee, which is, of course, incredibly important for our area, given the amount of entertainment industry we have in the region and right here in the media city. And so my legislative priorities for this year are, first of all, making sure that we deal with the COVID impacts on our state economy and on our vulnerable communities and on all of our communities. I'm particularly worried about the growing divide between our economically disadvantaged communities and our wealthier communities, and the data is starting to show that during COVID, there were a lot of, you know, white-collar workers and wealthy individuals who did very well and actually did better. And meanwhile, our essential workers, our service workers, many of whom are minimum-wage workers, really bore the brunt of the economic impact of the pandemic. And I will say that I think in our region, a lot of our entertainment workers who are independent contractors, who worked job to job and didn't have the kind of safety net sometimes, as people who have more of that, you know, who just could go on leave but could continue their benefits, for instance, it was really, really hard in our entertainment community, and I'm glad to see production coming back now into the region, and hopefully that will help bring some relief in our area. Housing production continues to be a priority of mine along with homelessness. This is, as I said before, really one of the huge crises of our region, and really, I think in some ways, the embarrassment of Los Angeles and of California, the number of homeless residents we have, which is ever-increasing, and trying to find ways of just stemming that tide. We do service quite a lot of people, and we've had a record number of people in LA County be rehomed and find, you know, find homes, and yet, for everyone that goes into a home, it's like two more people become homeless. So this is something we have to spend a lot of our energy working on. Transportation in sustainable communities is a huge priority of mine. It has been, and now with my new committee chairmanship, I really am hoping to push that and to push the envelope. Transportation is responsible for about 40% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions. It's really a shocking statistic. We've gone in a great direction in California with clean energy, with so much of our sustainability portfolio, but we've gone in the wrong direction with transportation. So you've probably heard about Governor Newsom's incredibly visionary goals, which he's now backed up with huge amounts of funding, of getting an incredible amount of EVs on the road, zero-emission vehicles, and he's investing over $1 billion in just EV infrastructure over the next several years, and he's also put a cap on when you can't sell a new gasoline-powered engine in California. And I think it's the right thing to do, and I commend him for doing that. And I think it's the right thing to do, and I commend him for doing that, and it's only part of the equation. We also have got to get people out of their passenger vehicles, and we've got to invest in transit and active transportation for so many reasons, so that's a huge priority of mine. Along with that, promoting those transportation alternatives like transit and active transportation, and also refocusing us on traffic safety. You know, children have some of the greatest risk of dying at a young age, not from COVID, not from disease, not even from gun violence, but from traffic accidents. That's the leading cause of death for children under sixteen, and that is something that's unacceptable. We have put so much focus in this country in making the inside of cars safer, and cars are so much safer than when I was a kid inside, but they're not safer on the outside. In fact, I would say they're more dangerous on the outside, so this is something that I, you know, is a huge priority of mine. As the mom of a seven-year-old who just learned to ride her bike this week, I'm really proud of her just learning to ride her bike, and I'm terrified that she's now riding a bike because my street doesn't have sidewalks. So I want to make sure that we protect all of our kids. Climate crisis and environmental protection and sustainability is still a huge priority of mine and will continue to be. And then lastly, protecting vulnerable communities, people who don't often come in to advocate for themselves, the mentally ill, foster youth, senior citizens. We always, every year, try to do quite a lot of legislation to protect those communities. So I've introduced eighteen bills this year, and I'm going to just talk about a couple of them, a few of them, if you don't mind, and then I'll take any questions you have. A B six forty-two is a fire prevention bill that works to expand fire safety building standards, something that's very important in a community like ours, which we are in high-fire-prone areas, particularly our hillside neighborhoods. And then it makes changes to support what's called cultural burns and prescribed fire. This is not for our region, this is more for the forested regions in Northern California, but this would create a cultural burning laser, a CAL FIRE, to work with our indigenous communities on their cultural burns to expand that program, because it's actually shown to greatly reduce catastrophic wildfire. I've introduced A B four sixty-eight about emotional support dogs, not to stop emotional support dogs, but to put an end to the fraudulent sale of dogs that often don't have any training as emotional support animals, where people think that they're getting a service animal, and they're not, and this has led to some really awful examples of biting and mauling that I'm not even going to go into right now, but it's a consumer safety bill. A B four fifty-two about parental notification for the safe storage of firearms. Another huge priority of mine is gun safety, and another huge killer of children across our country are children who get their hands on a family member's gun and either kill themselves or others. Sometimes it's an accident, sometimes it's suicide. We even had a mass shooting here in California a couple of years ago that happened because a high school student was able to get his hands on a, I think it was an uncle's unlocked guns. What this bill does is it would have our school districts have to send notification every year, they can do it through email, it doesn't cost anything, to parents, telling them about the legal requirements to safely store guns and what that means exactly, that it's not acceptable to put a handgun in a shoebox on the top of your closet, as many people think that seems to think that's okay, talking about the horrible examples we have of kids getting into unlocked gun safes, purses, everything else, and making sure that all of our parents, of all of our schoolkids, have that information sent to them every year. This is being supported by a whole host of gun safety organizations, and something that I think is very important. A B ten twenty is about hospital debt collection. In California, hospitals must provide charity care to patients who receive emergency medical services but who are underinsured or uninsured. However, despite qualifying for charity care or medical help, there are many patients who still get hit with huge medical bills. This means that hospitals are not screening for other coverage or providing charity care at the frequency that's required by law now. A two thousand nineteen report documented one hundred and thirty-five million dollars that should have been provided to low-income residents through charity care from our nonprofit hospitals that were not paid to those patients. So this bill strengthens the law to ensure that hospitals meet those requirements, as well as adding new protections to consumers, because what happens is that these consumers can't pay the bill, and the next thing you know, their information is sold by the hospitals to collections agents, and their lives are ruined as these agents try to collect bills from them that they are not supposed to have to pay in the first place. A B thirteen seventy-one is a bill attempting to reduce our plastic waste, which is not recyclable plastic packaging material, and what this bill says is that by a date certain, large online retailers who ship are no longer allowed to use plastics or polystyrene in their packing material. This gives them time to phase in new types of packaging, like Amazon is already using a lot of recyclable paper products in their packing material, but this would say no more bubble wrap, no more plastic film, no more polystyrene, because none of that is being recycled, and instead, it's clogging up our landfills, which all of you are paying for in local government and you're passing along to your residents in their trash fees, and it's really unacceptable and unnecessary. That packaging material is used for packaging and then never used again and then discarded. So I'm very passionate about this bill. Oceana is the sponsor, and it's going to be a tough fight, but I'm up to it, and I know that there's a lot of interest in plastic pollution in Burbank, so anyone who's interested in helping, please let us know. Now, I'm just going to give you a little bit of district updates. During the last twelve months, our office has helped over two thousand constituents resolve issues with unemployment claims through E D D. This continues to be a very difficult agency to deal with. They were really overwhelmed with the amount of claims that came in because of the pandemic. They were not equipped to handle the CARES Act, and so it's been a real challenge to try to get them up and running. I have been pushing for E D D to be drastically reformed and overhauled. They have made a lot of improvements, but things are still really rough. My staff is here to help. I would just let your, you know, constituents know, and anyone who's listening, if you are having trouble, reach out to my office. Please be patient. I have five staff members in the district, five. They're doing almost all their time working on E D D cases. That's almost all they do right now, and there's only five of them, and we have about eight hundred open cases right now, so it's a lot for them to do, and they are not trained E D D personnel. So, but they do their best, and they want to help, so please do reach out to us if you're having a problem. Don't just suffer in silence. Don't, don't, don't give up. Come to us, we'll do our best to help. We take that very, very seriously. Small business, nonprofits, and cultural institutions have been really struggling during the pandemic, and I've been working with them, kind of trying to champion their efforts and their issues. I've been advocating for us to safely reopen those sectors and to have the guidance from the state to open our museums and our live performance venues. You know, we opened our malls, like, what, a couple months ago, and yet, our museums, who have amazing P E P A filters because they're protecting artwork, who have security guards in every single room to protect artwork and who can meter people through, have not been given any guidance or allowed to open. So that is changing, but it's something that I have been advocating for. I've also worked with my colleagues to expand grants and tax relief for small businesses, nonprofits, and cultural institutions. They're so important to our community. They are loved, they are, they give us a sense of place, they celebrate the things we care about in our community, whether it's the zoo or the autory or the Museum of Neon Art or Forest Lawn Museum, I mean, throw out what you love the most. They're important to us, and they haven't been given a lot of support, so we've been getting them some help, and hopefully they'll get even more, but they are important. And over the last year, my staff and I have held numerous virtual town halls and roundtables on a lot of topics. We like to say we're town hall ninjas, we love doing them, we love engaging our constituents, we love, people come to us and say, hey, I'm really interested in autonomous vehicles, why don't you do a town hall? Did it, based on somebody asking us to do it. We just love doing these. So we have done town halls in the last year on education, on COVID impacts. We worked with Representative Adam Schiff on talking about COVID impacts. We have done town halls on wildfires, numerous town halls on wildfires, resiliency, and helping people protect their property and their homes, social justice and equity. We've done town halls on that, on vaccines, and we did an amazing, amazing town hall with NASA J P L, which is in our district, about the last Mars rover landing, perseverance. We had more kids on that town hall than on any other town hall, and they asked amazing questions, and so many people wrote us after and said that it was the first time they had done a political town hall with their children, and they loved it. So thanks, community, who joined us on that. And we've done roundtables with stakeholders on housing, nonprofits, and small business. You know, behind the scenes, we have our little kitchen cabinets, not so small, actually, made up of stakeholders from all these different sectors, from small business in our community, from our museums, from our nonprofits, from our housing community, our shelters, and our homeless advocates, and we meet with them regularly to get feedback on their needs, on what's working, what's not working, what we can help them with, what we can do better on, and we will continue that. And mostly, we want to hear from all of you. We want to hear from you, our partners in local government certainly, and your staff. We want to continue partnering with you, and we want to hear from the community. We want to know what we need to do better. We want to know what we're doing well and what we should do more of. We want to know how everyone's doing. When, the first few months I was home from the pandemic, I was certainly doing my meetings, but we were on our interim recess, and we have been having so much trouble with E D D claims in the office. So I decided to spend my days by calling people that had gone through my office for help, to see how they were doing. And I'll tell you, they were difficult calls, some of them, some of them were really sad calls, there were a lot of people who we hadn't been able to help yet, and I got yelled at quite a bit. I had people tell me incredible stories. A woman who said that she didn't want to call us, I think she was in her eighties, she might have even been older than that, and she said, you know, she said, you know, I know that there are people out there that are really suffering, and I'm not worth your time, she said, I just need a little help because I don't have any way of getting anywhere, and I need to go food shopping, and I'm scared to take the bus. She said, and she goes, but, she goes, and I've been hungry, she said, but, but I'm fine, you know, I have a roof over my head, and I want you to think about other people. And I swear, and I'm tearing up just thinking about it, it actually made me cry, because this is our community, you know, we have people that are so selfless. Here was a really elderly woman who lived alone, who couldn't find a way to put food on her table because of, during a pandemic, she was afraid to take the bus, as she should have been, because of being so vulnerable, and she didn't want to ask for help. She didn't want to ask for help. That's who we have around us. So I guess the last thing I'd say is, there are people like that in Burbank, and we need to also look out for them because they don't call. You know, so for all of you listening, look in on your neighbors, especially if you know they're alone, especially if you know that they're vulnerable or older, just knock on their door or give them a call and see how they're doing. And if there's anything that we can do, if there's anything that's too much for you to handle, let us know. We want to help. Thanks again so much for inviting me here tonight. It's been a really great honor to spend some time with you, my friends, and if, I don't know if you have any questions for me, but I'm happy to spend a few minutes to answer them, unless my time is up and our time is up.
No, it's around your schedule. If you want to open it up to my council members, I know they'd like to weigh in.
I'd be too.
Perfect council members, who would like to start off?
I mean, you've already asked a lot of questions.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Assemblymember, thank you for being with us tonight again. I just want to thank you and your staff for working with myself and our city attorney on A B four twenty-two. Hopefully, we can bring it back in the future.
Hopefully, yeah, we will. I promise you, we will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Anybody else who would like to have, Councilmember Anthony, he has the mic, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time, Assemblymember, I appreciate you coming down. I've been attending the local March for Our Lives organization in Burrows, that's the high school kids who are, you know, really fighting for gun safety and gun violence prevention. And they're, they were wondering if I could ask you about anything local that Burbank could do. I know you had the state gun storage bill that didn't get passed. Is there something we could do to help out with that?
Well, yes, so the safe storage bill is now the notification bill. We all decided that that was a better way to go about this for a variety of reasons that really have to do with sort of larger policy and some concerns that some of the advocates had. So absolutely, we have some of the student groups who are advocating for the bill and have come on as sponsors. So we have a great mix of Moms Demand Action, we've got the Moms, we've got Brady, you know, this very sophisticated gun group, and we've got, I think it's Gen, I'm trying to remember the name, not Gen X, but it's something like that, of young people who take on, high school students who take on various issues, and they've also come on as a sponsor, including some local students here, right here in Burbank. So absolutely, that is a bill that's really gotten a lot of attention, so.
And what was the number of that bill, just so I have it?
Let's see, I never remember the numbers of my bills, except for forty-three, I don't want to remember, because it's my district number.
I can look it up, the notification bill, you said, right?
Yes.
I believe it's four fifty-two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony.
Councilmember Springer or Schultz, would you like, okay, Councilmember Springer.
Okay, thank you very much for this time. I would just ask to please keep in mind programs and incentives that, for home ownership for our residents, for all California residents, just as a way to build wealth, but also manage housing costs.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz.
Yes, absolutely, and I, there may very well be legislation around that, I'm not aware, but absolutely, thank you for that.
Councilmember Schultz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assemblymember Friedman, thank you for being with us tonight. We're lucky to have you as a partner in this fight. The only question I have is, we covered a lot of great ground tonight, and my question is, what would be the best way for us as a council, as a body, and our staffs to remain in close and regular contact about these issues and how they're developing in Sacramento?
Thank you. I do, do, I'm always happy to take meetings with you, even set up regular meetings with any of you and your staff, to make sure that we update you on legislation that we think is of interest, to answer any questions that you have, and to talk to you about our legislation, particular legislation that you might be interested in. The last thing that we, that any of us want is to get blindsided, you know, either me vote on something without knowing what your feelings are about it, or the other way around, for you to miss an opportunity to, you know, help advocate for a bill that's meaningful to you, that you are supportive of. So setting up regular meetings is absolutely something that we'd be happy to do. Your staff can certainly also always call my ledge director, my legislative director, or my chief of staff with any questions that you have, and really, what I, what I would appreciate from you the most is letting us know when we can help. You know, that's the most important thing. You know, if there's anything that's an issue that we can help with at the state level, we can't always help, but we always want to try, and that can be us advocating to the governor for something, talking to an agency that's being a problem, like a CAL Trans, for instance, talking to any of my colleagues that might have bills that you have concerns about, and I was, I have been, in the past, gotten bills amended for the city of Burbank, based on specific concerns about areas like the Rancho, where they have specific needs that a lot of times other legislators aren't aware of, and I like to educate my colleagues and let them know. So I'd say just keep the lines of communication open and stay in touch, and all of you on the council all have my cell number, I know you do, and you can text me, you can phone me, and you know I write you right back, so I want us to be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the question, Councilmember Schultz.
I wanted to thank you for being here with us this evening, and I just, I remember our last meeting with Vice Mayor, and we met with you for an update, we talked about CAL Trans. The email is still coming to you on all the funding that the city of Burbank had to pay. Remember, we talked about the ends not being met regarding CAL Trans, so we have not forgot about that conversation, and thank you for looking into it, and the email will be coming very shortly. But most important, this evening, and as your commitment to the people of Burbank, we thank you as an entire council for joining us this evening, and most important, thank you for your efforts on behalf of our residents and our local businesses, as we, in partnership with you, you know, basically, we want to achieve our goals to make this the best community possible, and thank you so much for addressing these tough issues this evening and giving us your thoughts, and most important, again, cementing that partnership you have with the, you know, council members and our city staff. Ms. Freeman, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity, and thanks again for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmembers, before we adjourn tonight's meeting, Madam City Attorney, I understand that there is a request for a council to consider addition of an agenda item this evening. Will you please lead us through what the process is for this evening, Madam City Attorney?
Sure, and Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, members of the council, and I just wanted to say, I see that Assemblymember Friedman's still on the call, and this is, you don't have to stay anymore, I think this section's over, so I just wanted to make sure she knew that. So thank you so much for being here tonight with us. Thank you, council. So I'm going to go ahead and sort of read a little bit of what we're asking the council to do. So under Government Code, Section fifty-four, nine fifty-four point two- So under Government Code Section 54954.2 Subsection B2, which is part of the Brown Act, it allows the city council to add an unanticipated urgent item to the agenda. So I am requesting that you consider adding a closed session item to this agenda, which is the city of Burbank, Etelle versus Barfly Inc., which people know as Tin Horn Flats, case number 21STCV07923. To add this item, the council by four-fifth vote must determine there is a need to take immediate action, and the need for such action came to the attention of the council and staff subsequent to the agenda being posted for this meeting. After posting of the agenda for tonight's meeting and less than 24 hours before this meeting, and I say the 24 hours because if we had had 24 hours notice, we could have done a special meeting, but we didn't have that luxury. A grave life safety hazard was created at Tin Horn Flats after the owners broke the padlock the city placed on their side gate pursuant to the court's modified TRO in this matter. Tin Horn Flats held an event at the restaurant last night, and through social media posts, staff learned Tin Horn Flats actually allowed numerous, many, many patrons inside the main barroom restaurant inside the building, even though the front door was still padlocked and closed on the outside. This condition blocked the primary means of emergency exit from the building, creating an imminent life safety hazard to both patrons and Tin Horn Flats staff, and demonstrates their continuing and ongoing reckless disregard for even the most basic safety measures. Council's being requested to go into closed session to discuss its options in the litigation regarding this egregious breach of the court's order and ways to aver further life safety hazards. If council believes it can make the required finding, a council member, sorry, council member must move, make a motion as follows. To add this closed session matter to this agenda because there is a need to take immediate action, and this need for action came to the city's attention after the posting of the agenda and less than 24 hours before this meeting. If a council member is so inclined, they can say so moved, and the mayor can ask for a second and then debate or vote on the motion. Thank you, Mayor Fruetsch, and I'm happy to answer any questions about this part of the proceedings.
Vice Mayor Springer? I mean, correction, sorry. Councilwoman Springer, I saw your hand up first. You have the mic?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, can you please call this official vote?
Councilmember Springer? I would say yes. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Telemontis?
Yes.
And Mayor Fruetsch.
Yes, motion carries. Five oh, we will, we will now adjourn to an online closed session meeting of the Burbank City Council.
If I may, just so everyone's clear, you should have received an invite for another meeting. We're all going to leave this one and then log into the special closed session meeting.
Councilmembers got the instructions? Yes? Okay. Thank you to the members of the public for joining us this evening, as now the council is going to have a online closed session meeting. See you in a couple minutes, councilmembers.